Okay. Good morning. Good afternoon, sorry. Thank you for joining us today at a special board meeting. Before we move on, please join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
So, Board members, thank you for coming in. Kind of a short notice. I was...received a call from Supervisor Groves on this item, especially in the time of July's 10th possible meeting. And so we thought it was important to break before the Board. So again, thank you for coming in at the last minute on your holiday week. With that, we will move into...oh, before we go into county matters, sirens you are hearing, we are told there's a fire. Supervisor Brown, I'm assuming you know this, around Burt Ranch?
Oh, I understand.
Oh, okay. So that's where the sirens are off to. Moving on to county matters, these items include nonroutine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the Board or staff may request that an item be heard out of order. Moving on to item 1.1, review the county's position on H.R. 6596, Northwest California Wilderness Recreation and Working Forest Act. And take a position on H.R. 2250, Northwest California Wilderness Recreation and Working Forest Act as reintroduced in April 2019. If you recall, last summer, we took a position on the previous bill of three to two to not to support. It has been reintroduced, as mentioned, this last April. We have a new Board member as well, and so that will be the discussion under item 1.1. Supervisor Groves, would you like to start off the discussion?
So, the history probably most of you know, but we had a list of items that we felt uncomfortable were in the last go-round. We requested those to be changed, and there was no movement or change on those items. So we voted to not support as it was written at that time. So the items that we requested changed still have not been changed in the new bill. And I've been requested to speak at the hearing, and I wanted to be able to speak for the whole Board, or whatever concerns the Board has, not just as District 1 member. Really quick down the list of concerns we had were the elimination of new grazing rights in 7A. Go through here, the withdraw from, and this would be under 7E, withdraw from all form, this is 7E1, quote unquote, "all forms of entry appropriation disposal under public lands, location entry and patent in mining laws, and deposition under all laws relating to mineral and geothermal leasing rights." And we're not referring to the...none of our concerns had to do with wilderness areas themselves at that time. We did not make any suggestions that we are making suggestions on the 730,000 acres of restoration land that we're looking at. So all the items I'm talking about are part of that restoration. So in short, eliminate new grazing, new mining, and the ability for public lands to be traded or sold. Another issue in this zone, which is a newer issue, and I'm not sure if it got missed previously, or it's an add-on, is that under...in this zone, that the Secretary shall use, and the term "shall" means must, shall use prescribed burning and wildland fire to extend practically to achieve the purpose of this section. So I think it should be brought forward to the Board to discuss, do we want the Forest Service using wildland fire as a technique to remove timber, or should we ask them to give more leniency to the Secretary to decide on his own? So as it's written, is that they must use wildland fire to remove vegetation. Then there was the concern of this on total removes over a million acres of land from the Timber Reserve acreage in our land, which of course, most of you know, that the county gets a percentage of all timber harvested in Trinity County, which is 25% of their...what they get for it. So this would remove that and turn all activities into stewardship programs with potential loss of, who knows? There's been no good studies done on how much land was in that. So understanding that maybe that's the best way to go, the state or the federal government needs to come up with some sort of reparations for that loss of revenue for the county. They will expect us to keep maintaining roads and all that, but they're taking a lot of funding, potential funding away from us. And lastly on this, there was a...the disadvantage of being around here forever is that you've seen years of things go by, and in the past, the Forest Service has rarely kept their promises to us. And it's very hard to understand why they would keep this promise to maintain these roads and do the work that they say they're going to do on fire breaks when they have never come through. Maybe "never" is a aggressive term, but they rarely have come through in the past. So I had come up with the idea that possibly restoration work gets done first, and then wilderness comes in and takes place. So that was the concerns at the time, those concerns still remain. And this, and I wanted to know if that still are the concerns of the Board, or if there's a new direction the Board wants to go?
All right. Thank you for that recap. Before I open up to the public, any comments? I'm holding my... (Inaudible). Okay. All right, thank you for that recap, and then I will open for public comment on this item.
Chair Morrison, members of the Board. My name is Clarence Groves, and I've been before you before on this topic, and my mind has not been changed. Folks here today are interested in what is best in the long run for Trinity County, but we have different visions of what that best is, and strong differences actually. And from day one, actually several years ago, when this was first presented to me, I have been concerned about the asymmetry of this bill. And Supervisor Groves just mentioned it, did use that term, but that's what he was talking about. And instant wilderness versus restoration work, which could improve forest health and supply jobs and logs, is far off or never. Now, the Forest Service isn't making any promises in this legislation. This is Congress acting, not the Forest Service, but I agree totally with Supervisor Groves' comment that they haven't come through forests very often in the past. Nothing in the bill increases Forest Service authority or capability beyond what they already have. No funding, no additional mandates. It's just, this is what we'd like to see you do. Nothing in the bill guarantees that the work not getting done now would get done in the future. And so until this asymmetry becomes significantly more balanced, I remain in opposition to the bill regardless of what the number is, 2250 currently. And I would just add in closing that regarding the next item, why would we not send the Board member who has the most experience and is available to represent the county position? Thank you.
All right, you can come back and say that again at the next item.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Sierra. I'm with Congressman Jared Huffman's office. I have a brief statement to read. I'm happy to bring back questions for him. As you know, John Driscoll is the point on this bill, so I cannot answer any questions if you have them today, but I do have a statement to read. Good afternoon. I learned about this agenda item last night and wanted to be sure you've heard from me before taking action today. Since my point person on this bill, John Driscoll, is out of the country, I have sent Sierra Emery to read this statement. Since I reintroduced an updated version of the Northwest California Wilderness Recreation and Working Forest Act to this Congress, my staff and I have not yet had an opportunity to present the bill to the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. We want to do that, and we want to resolve any misconceptions there still may be about the bill. My request today is that you wait to take a position on the legislation until after we have had a chance to thoroughly review the bill with you and a chance to address all of your questions. Please keep in mind that the bill has already been modified several times to reflect input from stakeholders across my district, including in Trinity County. These changes include removing certain areas from wilderness proposals, such as Bonanza King, and moving wilderness boundaries away from adjacent private land in order to resolve concerns from Trinity County residents and timber industries. If there are additional changes that make sense and build on the spirit of the proposal, I would be happy to consider them and continue working with you collaboratively. That becomes harder to do if the Board immediately takes a position without an opportunity for us to further discuss the current version of the bill I introduced this Congress. Finally, it's important to note that the hearing in the House of Natural Resources Committee next week will not involve a vote. It is a nonvoting legislative hearing, and there is still plenty of time for us to meet and discuss the bill prior to any committee markup, and certainly before the bill would be considered by the full House. For these reasons, I respectfully ask that you allow at least a few more weeks for us to properly discuss the bill before taking a formal position on it. I look forward to that opportunity and to working with you going forward. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
So is the Congressman willing to pull it off the item next, on the 10th, and have this discussion and start the process?
I will ask him that directly. I'm not prepared to answer that today. Are there any other questions, Vice Chair?
Having no vote on the 10th, how would our decision in the past, or even now, influence or not influence, what happens on the 10th?
Again, I will ask him that. I'm not prepared to answer that question.
And just to make sure I heard you right, there is no vote coming up next week, and it's a part, it's like the reintro...I can't speak. Reintroduction preliminary part of the hearing, giant threat.
It is a nonvoting legislative hearing.
Legislative hearing where they'll be marking it up and changing it and massaging it. One of many, I assume.
No, it's...they said there is still plenty of time for us to meet and discuss the bill prior to any committee markup.
That was my understanding when I talked to the Congressman today, that they would mark it up.
Okay.
So I could have misunderstood.
I can clarify that for you. I can clarify that, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
I live in Hayfork. South Fork Mountain Management Unit is our family's range allotment. We run cattle on Forest Service ground up there. My family has concerns with the management practices that are laid out. We have concerns of especially the fire mortality and already having communication issues with fires in Forest Service and being able to relocate cattle. I think this is going to add to it. Additionally, I know we are grandfathered in under the current status, but going forward, you know, good practices. I don't understand why the possibility of eliminating it could, you know, happen going forward, have no grazing on the government land if we choose to conclude our assignment out there. We're also concerned with access going forward. Already, roads that are unmaintained by the Forest Service, roads getting put to bed that are access for us, is this going to eliminate more and make it harder for our management of the Forest Service ground? So these are some things going forward. Also, we're concerned about, my understanding right now, that there, if there is any funding for this area, that it goes to this new wilderness area instead of maintenance on Forest Service ground that is surrounded by it. So we would be maintaining an island, but no resources to get to that island. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm a little bit surprised that this is a special meeting, and I am glad to hear that there's going to need more conversation and is going to have more conversation. And there needs to be total markup, a lot of markup, and that maybe you guys could drag your feet until it gets on the ballot. It needs to be on the ballot for people to decide this in this county. We have very little representation, and in appearance, they're continuing to take more from our representative, possibly even. The census is soon coming up, and maybe it can be...Trinity County can be redistricted back to where it belongs, where it was before, in the center of the state and not the coast. And in case I don't have a chance, and I agree with Clarence, and within reason, not knowing the details on what he meant, and also what Bobby said, but also, in case I don't get a chance on the next item, I do not want, I am a constituent of Mr. Brown, and I do not want him chosen as the representative for us. So that's where I stand, and I know my husband feels the same way. Thank you.
I'm going to ask everyone to hold their comments for the next item, or stay on this first item.
For Board of Supervisors, I'm Terry Sheen. Few comments on State's proposal. They brought it to the collaborative, but a lot of problems there with it, and never got resolved there, so they're going around us and into you guys to try to get a quickie on this fourth of July holiday. So I've talked into them, and in their proposal, we have tremendous salt reserves, coal, chrome, mercury, gold, and silver deposits that are untapped. I mean, these are commercial trillion-dollar type things. When I was with Sierra Pacific Land Company, not Sierra Pacific, Southern Pacific Land Company, as a forester with them, so these are on a map, they're well-designated, not very many people know about them. State has put all their wilderness, their little red areas, as they're scattered all over these reserves that the county owns. It's terrible that we don't develop north of Coffee Creek, have a population of less than 50, when we have all these jobs waiting for other people and little towns to sprout up in each one of these drainage groups minerals are found. So I'm opposed to this, especially the sneaky tactics that they use, try to get their way and not hear out that there's better use for that property timber and all natural resources and that, so thank you.
I just want to clarify again, this item was brought at the last minute because of the time issue for next week by Supervisor Groves. State for no, not another group has brought this, it was brought through the Board, so...anybody else?
I just have a quick clarification. The bill is not getting marked up on the...
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Joseph Bauer, and I'm a strong supporter of this bill. I really think that it is a good thing for not only the environment, but for the people of Trinity County over a long period of time. However, I recognize the division in the county on this issue. We had it come before us at the collaborative, and we're basically split on it. And I think that everyone of you, if you would question all your constituents, you'd find the same thing, that there isn't a clear majority to oppose it or support it. So I think the county probably needs to move to a neutral position on this thing. You cannot get people to agree on it in any, you know, in any majority, so I think that you are...and I don't see the sense in sending somebody to Washington, and either. You should write a letter and tell the committee that you are unable to come up with a position, the county remains neutral on this, and let it proceed. So a couple of things, I wanted to reply to what Keith brought up and others about the Forest Service and getting some work done. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but we're getting wonderful cooperation on the Six Rivers. Matter of fact, they have taken the collaborative's position and prescription and outlined 10 years of work. And lo and behold, because they've taken the initiative to do that, there's a lot of money rolling into that ranger, Dan Dill. So we're going to make progress on the Six Rivers. The Shasta Trinity remains a problem. However, I think that if they have direction from Congress to focus on this, that we will get a focus by the Forest Service, at least to do what they can do. And I want to remind you that when we first came up with this idea at the collaborative and doing 1,000 miles of shaded fuel breaks, that's over a 10-year period, and that's only a small portion of the roads in this county. But we were proposing to do what the industry guys told us they could do in a year, and that was no more than 3,000 acres of shaded fuel breaks and plantation thinning. And that's partly because of, they don't have the staff they used to have. I mean, they are so short of ologists that they're borrowing them from other forests to get things done. So as I think you know, we have been six years trying to get this pilot project outside of Hayfork done. Well, they're happening on the Six Rivers, we're still waiting on the Shasta Trinity. But I think congressional direction, and especially if the leadership on Shasta Trinity can follow the lead, the Six Rivers, that only does projects that are collaboratively planned, then we might start moving on...
I hate to cut you off, but our time ran out. Thank you.
Thanks for your interest.
If you wouldn't mind, I would like to bring up an item that Joseph brought up, and that is what's going on with the Six Rivers. We've kind of allow...I don't even know how to put this delicately, Joseph, but because the Six Rivers has been moving forward, because it has an excellent ranger, every so often he starts getting kicked around, and Six Rivers starts getting kicked around by the rest of the county for actually doing something. So I just want to let everybody know, let Six Rivers be. They're doing a great job, and they're moving forward.
Okay. Anybody else from the public?
Travis Finch, I live in Douglas City, and I already sent these comments to both Supervisors Morrison and Chadwick, but I just wanted to bring them up here because some of these items haven't been mentioned. There was only one formally advertised public input meeting for this whole bill against Trinity High School several years ago, so the public has not really gotten an opportunity to give public input on this. Another item of concern is that by blocking out more land in wilderness and removing roads, you're going to make it even, not even, the bill will make it more difficult for future utility expansions to some of our isolated communities, so that is something to take into account. And I have years of experience battling the Forest Service in non-wilderness areas to deploy broadband. It's going to be impossible in wilderness. Another area of concern is there are plans to form a Northwest California Public Lands Remediation Partnership, and it actually says it will be made up of federal, state, tribal, local authorities, and private sectors. However, there is no mention of private membership in that, where it shows you the makeup of the committee. There's no public or private representation there, and there is minimal local government representation on that committee. So the public is grossly underrepresented there. The bill also mentions the addition of a visitor's center. We already have a visitor's center for Trinity County, we have one here in Mifflerville, we also have one in Trinity Center. So whoever inserted that section into the bill is kind of unaware of what we already have going on here. Lastly, I also have a concern that Supervisor Groves brought up about where does this net revenue go from the stewardship contracts? And what is the Forest Service going to do to remediate that if we're not getting it anymore? So I think that's all I have to input. Thank you.
Travis, I think you brought up an issue at our collaborative regarding site downriver, and I was told that would not be affected by this.
I'm aware that they cherry-stemmed out Ironside Mountain, but you know, there are other future potential sites that are not in wilderness now. It could be potential sites if a forest plan amendment was done, but those sites will never happen if it's in wilderness, so...
And then also, just so you know, Congressman Huffman has introduced the Public Lands Infrastructure, Telecommunication and Broadband Act that is trying to bridge the gap between infrastructure on public lands and accelerate that deployment, so you might want to look at that as well.
What is that bill number?
I don't have the number. I can get it from...
I'll look into it. But again, those are kind of conflicting, you know, in terms of the wilderness... of the wilderness versus, so I don't know.
And I haven't dug into it, but just so you know.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Larry Glass, Executive Director of Safe. For the record, make it clear, Safe had nothing to do with this meeting. I had a lot of other stuff going on today that I had to drop in order to come over here with this. You know, if you don't like wilderness, and you don't like shaded fuel breaks and taking care of the plantations, fine, but don't use false misleading statements to support your position. And the way that things operate in the forest today, there's no money to be made, there is no revenue coming out of the forest. Any timber sale that would happen today would be a deficit sale. So, stewardship contracting, which we've advocated as the collaborative for the projects we're promoting on the Six Rivers, it's so that they pay their way as they go through the forest, you know? Otherwise, no work's gonna get done at all. So, that's how it works. The revenue goes to pay for all the work that has to be done. So, the timber company buys the logs and they sell them, and they maybe make a little profit. So, the timber company makes the profit, but the Forest Service then's gotta do all the cleanup and all the fuels reduction and whatnot that goes on with all the work that we're trying to get done to reduce the fuels, and those plantations are an absolute money loser. And so, you've gotta be making money as you go along doing the roadside shaded fuel breaks in order to pay for cleaning up all the cut blocks that have not been maintained forever. So, that's why that statement about you losing all this revenue is just not accurate. There's no revenue to lose. I personally really support this bill, the three wilderness areas that are by me, Patterson, South Fork and Chincapin, I've been fighting for my whole adult life, I want to see those finally protected once and for all, and no, I don't ever want to see a cell tower or any other communication device in those wilderness areas, there's plenty of other areas to communicate from. Picket Peak covers the whole area right now, all in with a cell tower, so, anyways, thank you.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. I am really grateful that we have Representative Jared Huffman representing us, because he represents the broad scope of his constituents. For so long, we've had those that are representing cronies and high-dollar-end donors, and I would like to speak not so much to the adult supporters, the adult constituents, but rather to the children and to the, all the other aspects of the ecosystems here, the plants and animals, and that interrelated connection to life that we all depend upon. For children, it's not only supporting them now, but recognizing that we need to make provision for them as the adults, that we have to take care of the ecosystem, which sounds too often like a hippie, sort of a hippie environmentalist concept, but it isn't. It's the concept of everything that goes into treasure Trinity, and I appreciate that one, because we do have a special treasure here in all the elements of life here, and that those children will be dependent upon. And too often, we see that these ecosystems are being destroyed. The clearcutting was one example. You know, it sounded like the good thing, but then the follow-up wasn't done, and what now that we have these catastrophic wildfires, we're finding that they just go up in smoke so easily, and we have turned from that, fortunately. Also recreation, remember, we have millions of Californians just south of us, and as travel becomes more difficult, and so many more people fall out of the middle class or upper-middle class, it's gonna be for camping will be what family and families will be able to do, rather than traveling broadly. And this is such a marvelous place where recreation can and will be more and more in demand, and we need to look to that, and in order to have that, we need our intact rivers and lands. And then for the wildlife, they, of course, both plants and animals, need an intact ecosystem. And all of those things are promoted in Jared Huffman's bill, and made provision for maybe not the immediate extraction of resources, but certainly for long-range support of our children, animals and adults. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Amanda Barager, Junction City. Been sort of standing on the sidelines of this debate for a while now, and felt like I've been educating myself about what's going on on this bill, and I could talk about why I support it, and I can talk about the things I think that are being falsely stated, but what I really want to address is, from a public standpoint, my concern is that decisions are being made on personal bias. This seems obvious to me from the tit-for-tat in newspaper, and the things being said that are not fully accurate, and then also just it's been proven in, you know, board making decisions, when to my, you know, to the public view, there's, you know, not enough to be one way or the other yet. There's been comments today from people speaking about how there's not been enough public forums for this yet, so how can you really vote yes or no, or support or not support, and there hasn't been enough of that yet? And just to really be discerning about your own opinions compared to your constituents, and not acting on emotion, because that's what I have been seeing. It's been obvious in the newspaper, it's been obvious at these meetings, I don't think there's been enough to say one way or the other, and that I urge the board to just vote neutral until they feel like they are fully aware, and the congressman's offer to come and work collaboratively still is an awesome offer, and that you should take up his offer to do that before you sway one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, anybody else?
I think my issue is, is that the way they're gonna manage the fires in the county is just gonna let burn. Last year, before the campfire, California burned the size of the state of Delaware. So, these environmentalist people who want to save the environment feel it's perfectly fine to burn the size of Delaware down just in California. How can you be in favor of that? I just don't understand that. It doesn't make any sense to me. You know, we need to have proper management, we need to clearcut, I'm not clear, I don't like clearcutting, I never have liked it. My family's been in logging for generations, we've been building homes for generations. Proper management of the forest is very important. Part of this bill I was reading today is that they're gonna plant trees on the roads, so all the roads are gonna be gone, there's no way to be, it's there, I read it. So, they're gonna get rid of road systems, they're not gonna make it available for us to go in and manage anything. We've already lost fire breaks already in our area. None of this stuff makes sense to me, I just don't even know why we're even talking about it, we need to, you know, if Six Rivers can manage their forest properly in the tenth of Trinity County, and Shasta can do their part on the other side of Trinity County, I wish Shasta Trinity would actually do stuff in Trinity County.
Okay, anybody else?
Hi, my name's Alison Sterling Nichols, and I live in Humboldt County, so I just wanted to correct something, because I'm familiar with the bill, that it doesn't actually close any legally open roads, so it's not about closing networks of roads, and also you can fight fires in wilderness areas. In fact, among the environmental community, people often get upset, because you can take a bulldozer into wilderness areas to fight fires, so I just wanted to clarify those two facts, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else before I bring it back to the board? No? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Comments, board members, questions?
Sure, I can begin. First, I want to clarify something, because at the collaborative meeting the other week, I believe there was a miscommunication about who I am, and I wanted to go ahead and clarify that I'm not Justin Sullivan, I am Jeremy Brown, and I apologize for taking some time on this, but I do want to go ahead and read what I submitted in the ballot here, which was the reason why I ran, and I believe also the reason why I was elected, narrowly elected at 13 votes. So, you know, I do understand that it's very split in the view on this, and I believe that, you know, this might help understand where I'm coming from. So, District Four has the potential to achieve economic growth and stability by supporting local businesses and promoting outdoor adventure in our beautiful and diverse landscape in which we live in and love. As a business owner for the past 10 years, I have developed collaborative relationships with numerous community members and other business owners who have a common vision for our community, to cultivate a community that will offer our children a supportive economic future derived from our local resources. I will be able to use my experience as a business owner to help the county achieve goals and progress towards a more tourist-friendly environment with economical benefits. As your District Four Supervisor, I will always be available and eager to listen to your concerns and ideas, so we can have beneficial conversations that I can use to communicate to our county and state governments the needs of our community. I would be honored to represent our district, and will be determined to work with all parties to encourage and increase our economic vitality. That's the general basis of it, and I was accused of not fulfilling my promises, and one of my constituents was disappointed with me, and it was, he thought I was Justin Sullivan, and so I did want to clarify that that is not who I am, and that what I just read is the basis of why I ran to be a supervisor. In relationship to the Wilderness Bill, my understanding is, this is one of the steps of many before this bill is approved and stamped and passed on, let alone allocated money for. So, it is not a definitive moment in the bill, it's a step of many. Like I said, I think the representation of me winning by 13 votes is a really good representation of how a lot of the county feels as far as embracing tourism, embracing a concept of wilderness tourism, and also understanding a lot of people moved out here to be left alone, they didn't like the federal involvement, and you've been burned on past agreements. Supervisor heads of all organizations, businesses are changing annually, biannually, there's a constant rotation going through, and they do adapt new outlooks, goals, plans, so things do change. I know a lot of people in Trinity County don't like change, but it is, it's inevitable, it's happening all the time. With respect to grazing, Morgan, I was looking, Trinity County has seven active grazing rights total, and it's my understanding that none of these active grazing rights will be revoked or taken away, and I assume that as long as they're renewed on time, they will be continued on. I also think, you're in a, do you have like 150 cattle head?
Is that a question?
Yeah.
Less.
Less. I think there's a good opportunity for the grazers to potentially get some sort of special program going, so that the grazing is assisting with the common goals of the Forest Service, which is to minimize the ladder fuels and a lot of the brush. So, I'm not too familiar with grazing, but if the diet of the cattle is that of the standing brush in the area and not depending on grasses, there could be avenue for interesting grazing programs, that's all I'm trying to say, maybe not with cattle, but with other types of grazing animals, I think there could be a relationship built that encourages grazing. You know, the visitor's center, as far as the bill goes, I believe the concept of that visitor's center is something more like what Whiskey Town has, and a little bit more substantial and located around an environmental attraction, not necessarily so much a historical attraction, and a more educational-based visitor's center. And I don't mean that in an offensive way, don't take it personally or whatever, but I'm just trying to express what my understanding of it has been. I could go on, but that's, you know, I'm, I think there are changes that can be made in this bill, and there are adjustments that can be had that are more beneficial, but I think it's a great starting point, and it's a good way to continue the conversation. Instead of stomping it out right now and saying, "We don't agree with this at all," I've heard from many of the locals, multi-generational locals, that the Forest Service does what they do anyways, the federal government is gonna do what they do anyways. Well, if that's the case, you better try to encourage a conversation, otherwise you're just gonna do it, and you're gonna be just as disappointed, if not more. You're not gonna stop them by saying, "We don't support this," it might help some dialogue, it might help the representative, send a representative to listen more, and I think that's effective, but I don't think it's the best way to negotiate with the federal government. That's all I'm just saying.
All right. Surprised, Chris?
Yeah, so, I'm not sure where you think we're here trying to stomp this bill out, there's the vast majority of this bill...
You're talking to me?
Yes.
I didn't say stomp it out.
I think you did.
I said you didn't want to drag your heels through the process.
I think you said stomp.
I take your retraction back.
All right.
The fact is, there are issues in here that at this point are not beneficial to Trinity County. There's a lot of different ways we can go, but quite frankly, we're being told, "Don't worry, there's plenty of time down the road," and you were told that two years ago, "Don't worry, there's plenty of time for changes." And guess what? There hasn't been the changes, there's been some changes, but in the past year, there's been no changes. Then we're told, "Don't worry, there's plenty of time for changes," but we don't do them.
But one of your changes was met, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so, you have to acknowledge that...
I didn't know I only got one wish, and I'm sorry, I moved to this.
Should've done grazing and mining.
Maybe I should've, I did not know the rule of the game was you got one wish, and maybe my wish had been for more wishes.
That's a good wish.
I thought this was going to be a real discussion on what is best for Trinity County, and so, much of this is not, it's not perceived well, and maybe, you know, maybe it's just me, we don't get along or something, that's not my perspective, but I would welcome the congressman to pull this off for 10 days from now, and come here and sit down and have a real conversation, not meaning that he's not an adult, I shouldn't have said that, and work together and come up with something that is beneficial for the county, but I have offered that on several occasions, and it hasn't happened. it hasn't happened.
Anybody?
Oh, I-
Will you finish?
No, I keep going for Brown.
Okay, Bobby or John, any comments?
I don't see how much has changed since the last time you sat up here, except for Supervisor Brown is now the elected person for his district, and Terry is not here. The bill, it has a new number, there's some changes, there's a lot we don't know, and that's where we were this time in the conversation last time. We mostly don't know. The few people that have read it have concerns, to the point where the collaborative could not come up with a decision, and so I believe it's premature for us to think that we can, we don't even know what it says. It's like, we, we just don't know, it's not completed yet. I still would like to see workshops throughout the county, I would like to have the opportunity for the congressman to come here and, and do that. That, that is what we agreed on last time, that that would happen, and it hasn't happened. And Madam Chair, I would, I will facilitate that if, if that is your desire. There is a lot of misinformation, and I think part of that is, it is a tough document. It has over, I, I think I counted twenty codes so far today, I was looking at. So, you can't say, "Well, you read it and you got it," unless you looked at those codes, because all those codes impact the bill. So, we need to have a, a larger conversation and an understanding. I do believe Keith is the best guy. I don't think he's doing this out of bias or out of prejudice. I think he just is trying to understand what is in front of us, and the tit for tat's in the paper, papers need to sell, that's what I'll say. So, I'm not buying any of that. I know how much work it takes to put this before us, but I also know that we are not comfortable with making a decision, and I still would like to see the workshops. That has not happened. The collaborative couldn't even come up with a decision.
I agree with Bobby. I, collaborative couldn't come up with a decision, so I don't see why we need to. I would support this board in taking a no position, or as Joseph mentioned, neutral. When did we find out, I guess, when did the ad hoc find out about this hearing coming up? Jeremy?
The ad hoc never formally found out about it as a formal ad hoc.
Right, because there was no reporting out at our last session.
Well, I-
You specifically asked if there was anything coming up, so it wasn't known about last Thursday, right?
It was not known about last Thursday.
No, it was Friday afternoon.
So, I wanted to make sure. Keith, who, who requested that you join this?
What's his name?
He said Steve Peterson.
Steve Peterson, a Republican, can't read your writing.
Sorry, Republican, the, can't read mine.
Just, just by, just by saying Republican, it sounds a little partisan.
He's of the National-
It's Washington DC.
Um, I-
Yes.
He's the resource, he's a Republican director.
I, I have no idea where this is going, or where this board is going, or where this county is going on. If there's no plan, I've heard no plan from the ad hoc committee, no budget as to what you're going to be spending going to DC back and forth and all this other kind of stuff. I haven't, I haven't heard about what you're doing about Senate Bill 1110. Harrison introduced, Senator Harrison introduced at the same time.
As far as I know, there hasn't been any hearings on that.
What was the projection on how many times we're going to have to go back for that? We, we have nothing of what this is going to cost us, or what direction we're really going to go.
Well, this would come out, this first one would come out of my travel bunch, like any other travel.
So, I think if we can keep that part of the discussion to the next item, that'd be great, guys.
Yeah, actually, I'm not talking about who's going or not going. I'm just saying that there's absolutely no direction, no plan. Looks like this is a knee-jerk reaction.
Well, we are-
Going back with a, a no vote and a simple discussion, really, really disappointed in, in Board of Supervisors for acting this way.
We have, we are playing backup, and we're always behind the ball on this, John, because we don't know what is going on until it's actually done.
That's very true, and we also-
And so, we are reacting to what's going on in Washington. If the board says, "Fine, we don't care."
We also aren't using our resources then, because CSAC and RCRC both have contacts in Washington, and I, I assume NACO would stand up and, and give us a lot of information, because we have no one to manage our legislative slate, except the Board of Supervisor at their whim. The research I've done on this, forgive me, Jared Huffman's constituents and supporters of this bill, but I've looked, and it has a three percent chance of passing this year. And I hate to spend our money on this. Maybe we should just wait and see what the, what's going on.
Well, John, I'll, I'll say, wait and see, let's, let's wait and see what the dam does to the river.
When I, when I bring this, when I used to bring this up at RCRC, Mary Ann just would sit there and nod her head and look at me, and she knew there wasn't a chance of this moving through. So, you have a lot of, lot of things to use out there from RCRC, CSAC, and NACO, but we, we just kind of let it go. They actually have great contacts.
They do.
Yeah. So, I, I would, I would support this board taking a neutral position or tabling this, and also tabling the next item.
All right, I would like to wrap up this conversation. I think, you know, a year ago, we did ask for, I know, I specifically-
Excuse me, Madam Chair, there's a motion on the table.
I haven't-
No.
No, there is that, there was a motion.
No, make a motion, like-
Sorry.
I don't think there was, did I?
No, but, but if you'd like me to go in that direction, I also, I also don't think this is necessarily our direct fight, or we should be paying for this fight. Let, let Congressman Huffman and his supporters, and people against, pay for the spike, not Trinity County.
Supervisor Chadwick is correct. She asked for workshops a while ago. I know I specifically asked for a formal presentation in front of the board, and I'm sorry, I pushed harder for that, but we have right here an invitation to receive a formal presentation. It'd be great if Congressman could join us. I understand his schedule. If not, John Driscoll. I think that would be able to answer some of these questions. Some of the questions did get answered at the collaborative, but not all of you were there. Kathy, obviously. Keith, you raised some important questions you have concerns about, and I really would like to hear it in a formal presentation from the board. I, I too, as I did last time, want to go with the neutral position until we really had all the information out of a presentation, and, and actually try to work on some of these issues that you have brought forward, Keith, or anybody else who has some concerns on issues. We won't be able to do it without having a real, full discussion with a presentation and really get business done. I think anything but a neutral position at this point is premature at, at best, and at worst antagonistic, until we can get some of these questions answered. And I think they can be answered. We had, we just received an offer, and I'd like to take us up on that.
With all due respect, Ms. Morris, they've been answered, and the answer is no.
Well, I would like to hear that in a presentation form. I don't know all of your questions, and I, I don't get to sit down as an ad hoc with you guys, obviously. I can take your questions, and, and I'm happy to go to Huffman's office personally and take your questions, so I feel really that I understand-
That's what Supervisor Brown did three weeks ago.
I, I wasn't one, so, well.
And the answer came back is, we will always be open to change.
Well, I think we should have that discussion right here. We asked for a formal presentation.
You know, maybe we can have a side speaker.
For what? You don't, you don't think a presentation's important?
I would, I, I would highly urge the congressman to pull it off, the issue from ten days from now, and come here, come to the county, and gladly, and it would be a great solution.
I certainly can't, I don't know that his staff can speak to that. I certainly can't speak to that.
She, she said she would ask.
But when she asks, it's going to be, our meeting will be over, so I know there's a timeframe. That's the problem. There's a no vote on the next week's meeting, so I think that gives us a little bit of pause to get some of these questions, and even more questions answered, that do develop in these conversations. So, those are my thoughts on this.
Well, my experience is the longer you wait to participate in, in, in part of this issue was, is that we relate to participate to begin with. It wasn't until this was already a formed bill that did we have any, you know, real input, or was listened to at that point. So, the longer we wait to become part of the discussion, the less chance we have of getting success.
Well, my, my goal, if we were to have a presentation as chairs, to work as quickly as possible to have that presentation happen. I don't want to see it drag out six months from now. Supervisor, if you'd like.
Possible suggestion. What if Keith and Jeremy, or Keith just go representing their own district for themselves?
We're not on that topic yet. We have to figure out our position.
I, I'm-
We hold that thought. I'm giving the eyeball to the council.
This, this is moving us toward a position, or whether we have to take a position.
Yep.
We might need some more investigation from-
Well, that's where it's-
A supervisor or two supervisor going on their own and, and going to this meeting next week.
Well, we can, we'll save that for, because council is looking at me. Just give me the eyeball. We're mixing two items. So, what is the point of the board?
I motion to have the board remain neutral until this theoretical discussion meeting can happen, ideally with the congressman here in Florida, at another location that we were on.
I'll second neutral.
Any other further discussion? No? All right, please hold. Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Rose?
No.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
All right, now we will move on to the next item. Item 1.2, a point, a board member to represent the county on HR 2250 Northwest California Wilderness Recreation Working Forest Act in the National Resource Committee hearing on July 10th, 2019, no fiscal impact. Okay, questions? Supervisor Rose, this came to you. Would you like to?
Well, there's, at this point, there's no point if, if there's a neutral enough.
Yeah, sure.
It's like, nobody's going to go and say we're neutral, we don't know what's going on, so there's no point.
Would you like to table this item?
Well, the meeting-
I have to open up to public comment, but-
The meeting's on the town, so I don't know if you'd be able to-
There will be other meetings. That's, I think that's kind of the point, but, all right. I'll, any other comments, questions for the board members on this?
And I'd like to say, you know, I do think Keith is a good representation. I'm not trying to, I don't feel like I have talked badly or against any of the, your concerns. I think it's important to acknowledge, aside from all the concerns, or all the things that are helpful and in positive direction for this. Is this not better than before? It's, is it better than nothing? Is it better than the way it is? So, I think, I'm not saying that the concerns should not be heard. Personally, I'm not familiar enough with the, the entire bill process to know how crucial it is to have representation at this point. I would support representation of Trinity County as long as it's in a, in a neutral stance with the intention of continuing the conversation, sharing the concerns, but, but not, I don't know, I don't know what the best word is, not making it such a definitive statement. So, that's how I think.
All right, any other?
Well, I, I would be willing to go in a more neutral stance in trying to get the congressman, lady, not, not discussing in the hearing, meeting with congressman if he was interested. That I have had that open for a long time. I will say, Jeremy, in, I think we actually have the, mostly the same goals with a lot of people in the room here, maybe me. But when you say, "Is it better than nothing?" I, at this point, I say it's, it's not, because even with testimony we've given today, how great Six Rivers is doing. For them to complete what they say they're going to complete is going to be 240 years. And so, that isn't better than nothing. I get, you know, in my view, at some point, we need to do stuff right, or we just decide to watch it burn. And then we go to my Plan B, which every ten years, we just light the whole county on fire, and tell everyone to close for a year, and there you go. We can do better. The feds should do better. This is their land. They need to do better, and I think this county needs to tell them they need to do better. And the past thirty years is, has been very sad.
Okay, any more comments?
Absolutely. What Keith just said, they have to do better, and someone needs to tell them they need to do better. Well, Keith, sounds like he's the person to do that. So, instead of going there with an opinion, start to tell them to do it better, and get their asses back here and help us out.
I mean, we'd like to get, give them the opportunity.
I think that is an overall arching issue, Supervisor Rose, that we've all been working on for many years. I know the collaborative is one aspect. We all realize there's improvement, and you certainly understand where that can happen. I'm not sure if it's, should be married into this discussion quite yet.
Well, but frankly, at this time, the federal government wants to do something with our latest.
Right.
Part of the federal government. This is the time to act.
I think if we'd be more productive if we had some real concrete items to send your way with you.
Oh, you just said, the other two gentlemen just said, "No, that's not what they want. We have a more neutral."
No, once we have the presentation, we will have really better understanding of what we really need and don't need, or what is the case of a certain issue or not. So, with that, if there's any more questions, I'll open up to the public.
I'm still Clarence Rose. So, I don't have a problem with the county taking a neutral position, because it's amply demonstrated that we have no consensus. But it makes imminent sense to me to send a representative to Washington to the hearing, if this item is going to remain on that hearing's agenda, to say to that committee, "This-" if this item is going to remain on that hearing's agenda, to say to that committee, this bill is not acceptable to us, but could be made acceptable to us, and this is still a neutral position. We cannot vote up or down. We could vote up on this bill if you would add some of these items into the bill. There are people who would go from one side to the other or come together and we could all win with certain changes in this bill. That makes very good sense to me to send a representative, and I still think that Supervisor Rose is the appropriate person to go.
And I'm still Joseph Bowery. You know, I wanted to tell you, this bill is gonna have more hearings than you could begin to imagine at this point. The 84 Wilderness Bill took years and years and so many meetings, hearings before the Congress. We actually had a hearing right here in Weaverville. I mean, thousands of people were here in town for that hearing. But anyway, this, the point is, this has a long way to go. And I kind of agree with John. We need to spend our money and, and make our presence felt at the right time. And this hearing on the 10th or 12th, whichever it is, it, it has no bearing on whether this, this thing is gonna move or not. It's not even a voting meeting. So if you think we need some representation there, I would say, send a letter to the committee and say, we're still considering this bill. We are not for it or against it at this point. We're gonna have the congressman come here, and that's the place to work it out with him, Keith, is right here in this room with a room full of people to see what changes he might make. He's already made some changes for you, so he's not totally against doing something. But anyway, I think it'd be a waste of time to send somebody back there, a waste of money, really. And I think Keith would be the worst person you could send back there because he is so entrenched in his position on this, I don't think he could go back there and represent a neutral position for you. I don't think any of you should go. I think you ought to send a letter. Save the money. You'll need it later.
Eric Glass again. I want to second what Joseph said. I, I, maybe for a little bit different reason. First of all, this is, he's got a partisan invitation, for one thing, so that would immediately play against Trinity County, in my opinion. But putting aside my cheerleading for the bill, as a Trinity County resident, I want to see what's best for Trinity County. The way you do that is you work with your congressman, whether it was Wally Hurd before or it's Jared Huffman now. You gotta meet with him, you gotta talk with him. You can't get mad at him and expect, expect him to want to work with you then. In my dealings with the congressman, all he ever talks about is wanting to work it out with the Trinity Board Supervisor. So reach out to him, set up some kind of meeting with him. Make it so it works when he's available, so he could actually come here. You can't just set some arbitrary date and expect him to show up, but all I've ever heard him express openness to coming here and working. You brought up, you want, you didn't like Benanza King being in there, he pulled it out of the bill. Tom Walz didn't like all the adjacent lands near the Alps that were bordering SPI land because it was gonna interfere with our access. He pulled those out for SPI. He's listened to people around here, and I'm sure he'll continue to listen. I can't speak for him, but my experience has been, I'm sure he will continue to listen. So bring him here, have all your questions ahead of time. My, my suggestion to you would be, meet as your subgroup or whatever, talk to your other supervisors, come up with your laundry list of questions ahead of time. Get him to the congressman, have him here, so he's prepared on the scene to be able to give you answers to your questions or ways to work them out. That's my suggestion.
I would love to have Keith go to Washington DC, sit in that room, just to hear what's going on. Because we always say, we want to be involved. That's a chance to be involved, let's be involved. Why wait for him to come here? He can sit in there, you can hear what's going on, come back and tell us what you heard.
It is on C-SPAN. You can watch it on C-SPAN.
It's not physical.
And, and the website.
Amanda Bearagre again. I would just caution the board to send anyone who sways one way or the other, and especially if four to one vote neutral. Perhaps sending the one person that is clearly against this bill isn't the right person, and I hope that that's not taken personally, Keith, because I feel that your examples were, were very valid, and I appreciate your presentation of them, but then it's very obvious you're against this bill. So that doesn't represent Trinity County. We're very divided. Someone who's neutral and open to every constituent of this county, to all of the districts, should be the person to represent Trinity County.
Morgan Rourke. I think all the facts are always wonderful. That's why we're all here. Short notice, you know, came out of my budget, wasn't on the, in the cards to, to come here today to, I had other things to do. It had to do with Trinity County and farming and ranching. I think that having a person that has the history, has the ability to go back there to disseminate information from Trinity County, acquire new information for Trinity County, represent us, just like all of us here. We're here to get information for ourselves, for our family and for Trinity County. If we don't do that, we're doing a disservice. If, if I wasn't here, I, I wouldn't have the understanding of, of nonverbal behavior. I wouldn't have the understanding of the other folks that are putting information into us. What, what are the other players? There's, there's other people in Congress that are putting information into this bill. They have the ability to affect Trinity County, and if we don't have somebody there with boots on the ground, learning what's going on, to bring that information back to us, I think we are doing a disservice to Trinity County and to the people within it and all the representatives that are here today, spending their dollars to come here and see what you guys have to say. Thank you.
Diana Sheen, I'm still Diana Sheen. So, so I'm, I'm for Keith going back there. I agree with face-to-face people, not just the letter. That gets lost real easy, face-to-face people, works a lot better. And also, a person possibly, I think, is still on that board, is our previous Douglas Alfa representative? No?
He's off now.
Okay, he's off now. I missed that. But anyway, and also, just, just stay neutral. Get rid of this thing. Totally, totally gone. Neutral and gone. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. Just another clarification. Allison Sterling Nichols, I live over in Humboldt. But in other projects I've worked on in the past, my understanding of how hearings work, especially if you were invited by a Republican member of the committee, is they don't really invite people to come out and sit and listen. So if three of you are neutral, I just think it seems procedurally that should be part of the next, those two decisions are related because it's unfortunately not really up to this body how hearings work in DC and formal invitations aren't like, A, let's send somebody else to talk, because you can't do that. And B, why don't I just go listen? I don't think it's part of it either. So I do think your initial vote is related to the second vote as far as procedure of that. Thank you.
Yes, my name's Jenny Rice and I'm District One. I'd like to have this question of representation neutral. I don't think we should send anyone back there because once again, it's gonna be nonproductive. And as the lady just pointed out, it's a show vote. So that's what I'm going to say. Thank you.
Okay. One more? All right, Keith, you hit me before. Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to make one thing very clear. I do not have any animosity towards Mr. Al. We have a policy disagreement, and I flew out this spring just to meet with him. And unfortunately, he got called away and couldn't meet. I met with some staff.
Keith, could you use your microphone? We can't hear you.
Okay, sorry. This spring, I flew out just to meet with, with Congressman Huffman on this issue. And unfortunately, you know, I had scheduled it two months in advance, but he got called away and couldn't meet. So there was, you know, I met with his staff and there was no follow-up or no questions out of his, out of his staff. But this is not, this is just a policy issue. This is not any big pissing match between me and Congressman Huffman. Apologize for that, but I mean, that's the best description. I would love to sit down and meet with him and have these discussions. And I continue to reach out and I would hope that we could do that. If, if going back there and not going to the meeting and meeting with Congressman Huffman, I'd like to do that. Just whatever it takes to move this forward. I think there's, it's a little disingenuous to, to sit and say that I'm just against this bill. I've agreed with 90% of this bill. Haven't gone after wilderness, haven't, haven't gone after the water. I haven't done those things. What, what the environmental side wants is gay. I just want to make sure what the other side is, is looking at and that's work in the forest and things getting done is, is god. I think that gets misplaced that somehow from stage one, that I'm vehemently against this, and that's not true.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? More others?
I mean, yeah, the only other comment would be that because it was a Republican that invited you, that is interesting. But, you know, I feel like you and I have had good conversations about it. I've never, I've never said you were against the bill. I think we've had good discussions about what the pros and cons are. I'm not against you going to Washington representing, but with the invitation from probably an anti-approach to the bill would be misrepresenting a neutral county committee.
Well, Jared didn't invite me, so I wasn't partisan on that side.
Yeah.
I would gladly accept his invitation.
I thought the invitation was from a committee and he was, he's on the committee, it wasn't from a person.
It's from the Republican side of the committee, Republican Director of the Natural Resource Committee.
So it's a committee of the natural resource, right, which is holding this hearing?
I'm not sure. I'm not well-versed on how all that works.
I mean, unfortunately, I mean, at the moment, you would only be able to say this board has taken a neutral position until further information, presentation is done. So that is, whether it's worth it at this point, I think there will be another time. I don't have a problem with you going, I just think there's maybe a more productive time, but since this is only a preliminary hearing.
Motion to table item 1.2.
Your second?
My second.
Can I ask, oh, sure, the question. Do you think it would be a benefit for you to go?
I'm, I'm not 100% sure. I just know that in these processes, the people that are there first and last the longest get some seconds in these processes. In my experience in any legislation, it doesn't matter if it's local or federal, the guy that comes in at the end of it and says, oh, you know, by the way, you know, never gets any part of that, or never gets any input in that. I think maybe part of it would be relied on Congressman Huffman, if he would love to sit, sit down and move forward. I will gladly explain the stance of this board in a neutral way. But is it gonna make a difference? I don't know.
I mean, in front of the committee, you really have five words to use, maybe a little more. This board has taken a neutral stance, and that's really it. Could you have a meeting with Congressman Huffman on the side? That would be great. And no, Clarence, we haven't decided what our questions are. We're waiting for the presentation. We haven't agreed on those questions. So that's, the board has taken a neutral stance. Can you have that discussion with Congressman Huffman in his office? That's up to him, and maybe something's gonna get worked out. I don't know, of course, if he's available. That's the other thing, and it being such a short notice. So, I mean, you would have those, you know, in that hearing, those would, that's the stance you would be able to take?
As, as, as a board as a whole.
Right. So I do have a motion and a second to table it, unless there's a subsequent, or I will call for any further discussion?
Call for a question.
I have a motion to table it and a second. Please pull the board. Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Bennett?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
No.
Supervisor Chappert?
No.
Supervisor Morris? Oh, that's me.
Okay.
No.
She said no.
I said no. I would be supportive as long as we don't... You hear a no vote on the motion? Yeah. Unless there's somebody else could bring another motion, I just need to know that those are the, the words, you know, we can't go beyond the neutral discussion representing this board.
So as far as discussion goes, it would be...
You'd have to raise a new motion.
I, I actually turned on my line.
I'm sorry, Chandler, you did.
Yes, you did.
Counselor, we've finished this motion.
Yes, finished that motion. There's more discussion required, other motion to be added. I would like to make a motion to have Supervisor Rose go and represent Trinity County at the hearing.
I'll second. Does her vote include...
Would your motion include, you know, the words of the board's position? It's assumed, but I just want to make sure that's clear. And my, my worry, Keith, I will tell you, is that you don't get wrapped up... And my, my worry, Keith, I will tell you, is that you don't get wrapped up in, anybody, whether it's you or any of us, don't get wrapped up into a partisan circus back there. That doesn't help Trinity in any form, and that is my, my big concern. Go ahead.
Oh, I don't know if it's possible for Keith to be interested or willing, but I'd be willing to, to pay out of pocket to go as a spectator in view, and maybe if Keith does have any conversations with Congressman on the side that I could attend those with him, I'd be good enough to keep to decide or the board or whatever. But I'd be willing to pay out of my own pocket to do that for the educational purpose and to, yeah.
So, you would have to leave next week?
Yeah.
Supervisor Chablis, would you amend your motion? Do you have an offer to send, have both of them go?
I'll make a subsequent.
Okay.
That Keith, Supervisor Rose, and Supervisor Brown, both attend this and report back to us as their committee.
As their?
Yes.
As their ad hoc?
Yes.
I'll say. Okay. Please hold the board. Supervisor Chablis?
Aye.
Supervisor Benning?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Rose?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
You better not say no.
Just for dramatic effect.
That's how dramatic.
And I will, if it's, it's okay, while you guys are back there, I will also like to arrange for a presentation in front of this board with Congressman's office. I don't know if he will be able to attend. Again, it'd be great. We will try to work with the schedule as much as possible to have him here. All right. Thank you, board members. Thank you, staff. Thank you, counsel, for coming up. Happy 4th of July, and we'll see you on the 17th. The meeting's adjourned.